I'd like to call the meeting to order, the regular meeting, July 8th, 2013. If you'll please stand and join Councilman Member Stip in the pledge allegiance and stay standing for the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we do give you thanks for creating One Nation under you. We ask that you provide us this day with guidance, clear thought, as we do the work of the city and take steps to strengthen our community and protect its citizens. Please be with those that are serving to protect us, both here and abroad, and especially be with the families of the nineteen firefighters that will be memorialized tomorrow up in Prescott. We ask that you be with their families and their friends and all of their colleagues across this country and across the world and give them the peace and the strength that they'll need. We ask that in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Stip.
I had him give you your own supply.
As we look on the dials, we see we have some council members missing, so we're going to need a motion for Councilmember Campbell and Councilmember Osborne, who will not be in attendance tonight. Do I hear a motion? In a second, please.
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Loretano. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Thank you. Well, let's go right to the communications. We have two communications tonight. Our first communication is to recognize Fran Wetland, Goodyear librarian, who is retiring August 10th, and Nathan Torres, from our Parks and Recreation Director. He will present. Nathan?
Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to present tonight and announce the retirement of Fran Wetland, our librarian since 2009. And, you know, we talked a little bit earlier about the numbers that are produced from the Goodyear Branch Library, and I will tell you, that's a direct result of the hard work of Fran and the staff at the Goodyear Branch Library. I'm going to read something that Mike Sekel, our communications officer, put together after interviewing Fran and on Fran's behalf. It says, "Goodyear recognizes longtime librarian Fran Wetland for years of service. After a century, Fran Wetland is closing the book on a prolific chapter in her life and soon will turn a new page. Fran Wetland, our very own branch librarian since opening in 2009, is retiring after working in public libraries for fifty years and the forty-three, the last forty-three, as a full-time librarian. Fran began working for her public library in her home state of Wisconsin as a teenager in 1963, making eighty-three cents an hour." She was a high school page back then. She later completed a Bachelor's of Arts degree with an emphasis in American history and a Master's degree in library science at the University of Wisconsin. The rest is history. Although Fran has worked for libraries in five states, Wisconsin, Montana, Oregon, Washington, and Arizona, Goodyear is claiming her as our own. She has become a fixture in our library and can go anywhere in the community and be recognized. Fran will tell you, it's the customer service aspect that she likes. There is a misconception that she spends a lot of time with books, but she actually spends a lot of time interacting with the public, and she likes that interaction. And that's what we'll miss most in Goodyear. Each community I've worked in had its own unique flavor, Fran said. In Goodyear, it's the pride of the residents and their enthusiasm for the community in which they live. Upon her retirement effective August 10th, Fran will be moving to Rochester, New York to be with her son's family and granddaughters and also pursue volunteer opportunities. On behalf of the City of Goodyear, we'd like to thank Fran Wetland for her years of service and congratulate her as she prepares to start the new chapter in her life.
We're going to give her a round of applause after each speaker.
Supporting Fran here tonight, we have library staff, but we also have their leadership, Cindy Kolazinski, who's the library director, as well as Jeremy Reed, who's the deputy director for Maricopa County Library System. So I want to recognize them. I'd now like to turn things over to Vicki Hamilton, who has a presentation on behalf of Wally Campbell and Friends of the Library.
Welcome, Vicki.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council Members, I'm honored that Wally asked me to present this plaque to Fran from the Friends of the Goodyear Library. We have been truly blessed to have Fran as our first librarian. She's become such an important part of the community, touching so many lives with her children's programs and her adult book discussion group. A few members of both the Friends and the Adult Book Discussion Group are here this evening to show their appreciation for her work. Fran's been a joy to work with. More than once, she stood side by side with the Friends in a hundred-plus degree weather at the stadium, selling books at the Friends' annual book sales. She represented the library at gain events, and she dressed in 1920s decibel fashion with us to celebrate last year's Arizona Big Read. This is all in addition to her regular duties. We will miss her and wish her well in retirement. Fran, thank you for getting Goodyear's little library that could off to a good start. The plaque reads, "To Fran Wetland, librarian, appreciation for your outstanding support to the City of Goodyear Library, 2009 to 2013."
Mayor, you have something to present?
Yes, Fran. You hear me? Okay. Come on up here, because I'm going to call everybody up here, and we're going to take a picture. We just wanted to, it's a small token, truly a small token, for all the work you've done and your enthusiasm and your friendship. I can remember the first day when I went in there and the atmosphere that you developed in that library. You know, you can put books in a room, you can paint it, you can put furniture, but that doesn't make a library. And you have made our first library just fantastic, and look where we're going. It's because of you. I mean, if you hadn't built this up, do you think I could get this council to move into another place and spend that money? Or the people? No, we couldn't have, but you made this happen. It's very small, but we wanted to give that to you tonight. And then I'd like all the Friends of the Library, come on up, because it's everybody. Come on, come on, come on. Don't make, don't make me beg here. Those people that are here, come on up and be in the picture.
Mayor? The director also.
The directors, too, please come up. This is important. I'm going to stand in the background because...
Yeah?
Yeah? Library staff? Is it library staff? Oh, come on, come on. Let's make this a big party here. I really appreciate you coming here tonight. All right? Be sure you can see, because I'm tall, there's some shorter people that can be up further.
Do I have shorts on?
Oh, you have shorts on. Okay, well, I won't make your shirt. Let me show you. And one more round of applause for these wonderful people. Well, the next one, I'm just really excited about. Anybody who was there knows what a great time it was. Our communication is on the eighth annual Star Spangled Fourth. Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director, and Debbie Davini, Ballpark Supervisor, to present.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Pleased to present this evening an update and briefing on our past fourth, eighth annual Star Spangled Fourth celebration. As you know, we recently broke two records. One was the attendance record for the Fourth of July, and I don't want to steal all of Debbie's thunder, but the second was a world record attempt, an unofficial record, for the most people at a gathering wearing false mustaches. And this really took off. We, you know, our staff is very creative, and they're constantly looking to improve offerings and keep things fresh and new and fun, especially when it comes to these community events. And it took off and it went very, very well. I have a clip here I'd like to show you of some news coverage that Mike Sekel actually did a great job of really gearing up the media for this event. And so here's a brief interview that occurred.
Fourth of July, of course, is tomorrow, and with the extreme drought conditions and wildfires in the forefront of our minds, safety is a huge concern. And here with the City of Goodyear is Debbie Davini. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
I know you guys have a lot of things planned, but I want to talk safety real quick here because it's important for everybody to realize that we are still with extremely dry conditions, and fireworks are always a big concern.
Yes, they are. We have an extremely safe event. We have had the Southwest fireworks, has been doing our fireworks show for the last eight years. We have a shoot zone that's twenty percent larger than is required, so, and it's all dirt, so it's nothing in harm's way there.
Yeah. It is interesting, though, you know, when you're looking at the different cities fireworks displays, they really do have to go through all those precautionary steps, and it's one of the reasons why we really don't have fireworks in our own backyards.
That's correct.
Even more important to go to the big ones.
Correct. Yes, we want people to come out instead of setting them off themselves, obviously. You can't do that in the City of Goodyear, but this is a safe way to enjoy the event, and it's a twenty-minute show, it's a fabulous fireworks show.
Give us some of the details so that people who want to come out can.
Well, we start the event at six o'clock, six to ten, and we have live music from the Hundred and Eighth Army Band, as well as Groove Merchants, local band here in Arizona. We have inflatable activities for the kids, water slides, and we are doing a Guinness World Record attempt this year.
Mustaches, right?
We do.
All right, tell me about that.
We have the largest gathering of people wearing false mustaches, so we will be handing out mustaches in the mustache zone, which is sponsored by Quail Run Needle Work. They will be selling little patterns that have "I love mustache" on them. So really fun events for everybody. We're trying to break the record. That's currently fifteen hundred and thirty-two people, and we're looking to double that.
All right, we'll see if that can happen. Debbie, thanks so much for being with us. We appreciate it. And a big fireworks display, obviously, in the City of Goodyear, and you can check our website as well for several other activities that are going on. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We were looking for the fun one. We actually had one where I ended up wearing the mustache for the entire segment on three TVs. So again, thanks to Mike Sekel for getting us the publicity that he got. That's kind of what we were hoping to do with this, and I think we achieved that, and we got as much publicity as we could, probably since we've been open, since the buzz in '09. And a picture from the event, we've got one of our seating sections full of people with our false mustaches on. So where we're at right now with this is that unofficially, we have broken it. We are looking at nineteen hundred and fifty-seven, to be exact, on our count. Guinness will have to verify that with our documentation, so we have a witness, independent witnesses, two witness statements, as well as our stewards. So our staff that was working the event all have to sign statements and letting them know how exactly it was executed, how many people they watched, and so on and so forth. We also documented with pictures of all of the seating sections and video from the time that we started loading the zone, so a good forty-five minutes of videotape, as well as the five minutes where everyone was wearing the mustaches, so where we ended up playing YMCA and Macho Man, so hopefully you enjoyed that. But I would like to say thank you to everyone that helped us put on this event, fire, PD, communications, streets, everybody that's, you know, goes into this, making this our biggest event of the year. I mean, fifteen thousand four hundred people is more than we have ever seen at the ballpark at one time, so we're really pleased with that. And you all did a fantastic job out there helping get people in those sections, so thank you for being our ambassadors in the concourse and getting everybody excited to do this.
Comments from the council?
How do you not comment?
Yeah, well, you have to.
It was, it was really, as silly as an idea as it was, it was really very exciting to see people participating in that and really being that community thing that we've been talking about for the last year, and who knew that it would be around fake mustaches? So hats off to everybody, ballpark staff. I know I'm going to screw her name up. Tanisha?
Tanika.
Tanika. See, I was, it's one or the other. Anyway, my daughter commented, "What does she do? She sounds like a professional MC." So when you see her next, make sure you pass along, she's got, you know, no offense to the ballpark staff, but she certainly has a future in entertainment somewhere, so... But it was, she was great. Everybody did a great job.
Thank you. She actually does stand-up comedy on the side, so, yes, but that's wonderful. Thank you.
Sherry?
I just want to say, great event all around.
Thank you.
I heard great things from everyone who was there, great fireworks show, you know, it was just very well planned, executed, no problems, and that was a crackup. I just, I loved it. And I was actually listening to, I don't know what radio station it was, or just a music morning radio station, and someone asked them, "Well, where'd you watch fireworks?" And they're like, "I went to Goodyear, and it was great." So it was, I just, I heard that this morning, I was still, like, so excited, so great job, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you. That's fantastic.
Vice Mayor Joe?
No, it was a, it was a great event. I can't imagine fifteen thousand people, as hot as it was out there, and even during the fireworks display and the music. I appreciate, put a little Metallica in there, so thanks.
That was for you. That was for you, Councilmember Pizzillo. I thought about you when we were doing that, because I think you had ACDC last, last year.
That was the last request, but Metallica was fine. Yeah, thank you.
Perfect.
Well, it was, no. Cheryl Lynn, please, go ahead and comment before I do.
Well, I just think Mike did a wonderful job. It's not easy getting that kind of coverage in the media, especially when there's so much going on to cover, so that was absolutely amazing. And the staff and everybody that worked it, you know, it's, I've been putting on events for a really long time and know what goes into it, and you did it with a smile, and y'all were still smiling when I left at ten o'clock, so thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Well, it was just great. I have to, your interview was very well done. We know from Cincinnati, so when I had to do those, I know how hard that was. So it really was well done. Thank you. I want to give a shout out to Tanika. I actually wrote a little note to the department to talk about her because, you know, it took, for the people that weren't there, it took time to seat people, so that period of time took long, and we got worried, so I got counsel to go with me, and we hawked the mustache. We stopped people, and I got to the point where I said, "I'm the mayor. Would you mind going over there and sitting down for this?" So it made it lots of fun. But what Tanika did is during that period of time, people were sitting so long. We did the wave, we did the YMCA several times. She got people, really, and then people were shouting and clapping and laughing, so it really made it a party. And then the time came when you had to stay in your seat, you couldn't be doing YMCA standing up, you needed to be seated for five minutes, and that was quite an accomplishment to keep all those people seated.
Sure was.
My hats go out to you. The only problem I can see is, what are you going to do for next year?
We'll be here to think about that, Mayor.
I know. I am going to think about that, and I know, but you're probably the one that's going to come out with a creative idea. So again, this round of applause for the Recreation of Parks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything else, Nathan? Is that, all right, thank you. All right, well, let's go to citizens' comments from the floor, and we have a lot of them. Now is a time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. Are these all, City Clerk, are these all non-agenda?
No, Mayor, there's only one that's a non-agenda item.
And that's Dan?
Correct.
Okay. So we're doing non-agenda items. That person, I think I have Don, I mean, Dan Freiberg. And Dan, you know the procedure of the timing that you have and the lights, so go ahead.
I do. My name's Dan Freiberg. I live at 2914 South 162nd Lane in Goodyear. I come to you tonight as the Vice President of the United Goodyear Firefighters, Local 4005, Mrs. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity. Really quickly, I just want to kind of update everybody on how our approach to everything that's happened with the Granite Mountain hotshots and Prescott fire and make some quick acknowledgements. One thing we're really trying to avoid is any accolades. We're not doing this for any sort of kind of self-promotion or to be recognized in any way. I just want to acknowledge some people that have helped us make this happen, starting with council. You guys have been great, a great assistant to us in getting resources up there and city management as well. We thank you. Chief Louiezy and his staff in fire has also been very receptive to everything we've brought forward. Really, we couldn't, we couldn't ask for more. The members of our local have all stepped up, and it's really important that I make it clear, we're not doing anything more than anybody else. You know, we're not special. Departments from across the valley, departments from across the country are stepping up. So when I say we're stepping up, we're doing just what everybody else is doing, no more, no less. And really, I just wanted to come and say thank you. We did the fundraiser at the Star Spangled Fourth, we put out some fill-the-boots out there, and in just two or three hours, we raised, the total, I think, is $4,600. So all of that goes to those, those families of those affected, every, every penny. So again, just wanted to thank everybody and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, let's go on to the consent agenda. Will the City Clerk please read the consent agenda by items 6.1 to 6.2 by title only, please?
6.1, adopt resolution 13-1562, authorizing the city to enter into an agreement 13-2614 with Maricopa County and various cities and towns of this county. In order for the City of Goodyear to receive $7,948 in grant funds from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program and authorize the city manager to execute all documents related to this application. Number two, approve a budget transfer of $7,948 from the grant contingency account to the police supplies account, number 713-2110-421-61-26. Item 6.2, approve and authorize the city manager to execute a reimbursement agreement for public, special public improvement cost recovery regional wastewater trunk lines with Centex Homes, a Nevada general partnership, providing for the reimbursement of costs incurred to construct certain of the special public improvements identified in Cost Recovery Resolution of Intention Number 06-1065, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to take all actions and execute all documents necessary to carry out the intent of the agreement.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilman Stip, do you have a question?
Just have a, basically just a statement on 6.1.
Okay.
Want me to make it now?
Well, I think, let's just do it the other way, and you can make it after we have. So with no one from the audience, and is that the only one from the council that, all right, let's, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Councilman Loretano, open for discussion. Councilman Stip?
Seven thousand nine forty-eight isn't a big number, but it's a number nonetheless. And I think, we mentioned her name earlier, Christine McMurty. I'd like to say thanks. I know you didn't do this alone, because you'll never say you did, but it's just another line, a long line of budget, I'm sorry, of grant money that we continue to get every year. Tack this on to, you know, the fifteen or twenty other ones that we'll get in the course of the year, and, and when people are looking at, what are we doing with our budget money and do we really need a grant coordinator? This is why. So thank you very much for, for your efforts, both Christine and I'm sure your cohorts over at PD.
Bill, thank you very much for bringing that up. That is so true. It is so important for us to take, take advantage of any of those grant opportunities, and she certainly does a stellar job, so thank you for bringing that up. Could I have a roll call vote on this, please?
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Thank you. We're going to go to the business section, and the first item, 7.1, is a public hearing to consider amending Saraville Village planned area development to change the land use designation from a mixed-use to a residential for 6.4 acres. I will now open the public meeting, and Brett Birmingham, planner, to present. Brett?
Thank you, Mayor Lord, members of the council, members of the public. Tonight, we are, I will be presenting a planned area development for Saraville Village, and this is an aerial photo of the subject property. You can see the, the property. It's about 6.4 acres. It's located at the southwest corner of Lower Buckeye Parkway and 161st Lane. And as you can see here, the land uses surrounding the subject property include, to the north, Lower Buckeye Road, excuse me, Lower Buckeye Parkway, and also a neighborhood park. And to the southeast and west is Saraville, single-family residential in the Saraville This next exhibit shows the existing and proposed land use plans for Saraville Village, and the parcel that we're talking about this evening is right here. The red is shown as commercial on the existing plan. In 1998, the City Council approved a final PAD for Saraville Village, and this included about 320 acres of development, and all of the areas that you see there have been developed except for that small 6.4-acre commercial site. According to the applicant, the development of the subject property under its current commercial land use designation is unlikely since the commercial site is not located adjacent to an arterial roadway nor in an intersection. And also, there, there are a significant amount of undeveloped commercial areas within a mile of this property, which can serve the area with commercial development. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the Saraville Village planned area development to change the land use designation from mixed-use commercial to residential, as you see here, to be consistent with the surrounding area. They, the applicant is proposing a development of a 26-lot, single-family residential subdivision. And this is a exhibit of the subdivision plot showing the landscaping. There are 26 lots proposed. The proposed development plan includes two neighborhood park areas with amenities designed for active recreation. And the site is proposed to develop in a manner that's consistent with the surrounding residential subdivisions in Saraville Village, and also this development will follow the existing development standards of Saraville, Saraville Village. The applicant prepared this exhibit showing how it would fit in with the surrounding community. And just wanted to mention a few things related to the citizen review meeting, which we had on June 7th. There were seven property owners that attended, and they were all very supportive of the PAD amendments. During the meeting, the residents in attendance asked the developer to do two things as they moved forward through the process. The first thing, the applicant showed a neighborhood park to the north adjacent to Lower Buckeye Parkway. In this particular development, the applicant did not want to have a subdivision block wall on the north of the development. They wanted to keep it a little bit more open to preserve views and so that residents would be able to see more of the open space areas. And so at the neighborhood meeting, some of the attendants recommended that a low wall be placed adjacent to the totlot area to prevent small children from potentially running out into the road. And so the applicant has agreed to that, and, and we have added a stipulation, number five, to make sure that a low wall is, is provided in that area as, as the development proceeds. Additionally, residents expressed a desire for the applicant to, to provide an opening in the, the wall in this area here. I'm going to go back to this exhibit for just a moment. The residents asked if the developer could provide an opening in the wall here so that adjacent residents in the existing subdivisions would be able to access the park areas and be able to move back and forth through the neighborhoods. And the applicant agreed that that would be a good idea. They were supportive. And the applicant agreed that that would be a good idea, they were supportive of that. However, they do need to get approval from the Saraville Village HOA to do that. And the applicant has been working actively to, to provide that pedestrian connection. This case went to the planning commission on June nineteenth and the planning commission recommended approval of the planned area development with a vote of six to zero, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report. And this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have. Also, the applicant, Mr. Adam Baugh, is available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. I have one speaker card on there. Is there anybody in the audience that didn't fill out a speaker card that would like to speak? All right, so we'll go on with this one. Then I have Adam Baugh, the applicant.
I'm ready to get your pleasure before I can stay seated.
Oh, you just wanted to know if there's a question? Well, I think we'll close the meeting and then we'll be doing those questions at, after that, so, all right, thank you. You may be getting a question, I don't know. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read the ordinance thirteen dash twelve eighty-six by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number thirteen dash twelve eighty-six, amending the Saraville Village final planned area development as conditionally approved by ordinance number ninety-eight dash six oh three and conditionally rezoning approximately six point four acres generally located at the southwest corner of Lower Buckeye Parkway and one hundred and sixty-first lane from mixed use commercial to residential, South SF five point zero dwelling units per acre, adopting supplementary zoning map number thirteen dash zero three A, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stiff and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stiff?
Brett, can you put up the, I think the other yellow map is better, at least from my eyes, there we go. How does that, how does this fit into the requirements for the street layout? We have a lot of houses with a one-way-in, one-way-out kind of scenario. Usually, we see these in a horseshoe. So how does this fit into that?
Thank you, Mayor Lord, members of the council. The proposed design is in compliance with the city's design standards and engineering design standards. They are able to have this configured in this manner with the twenty-six lots. If they get, if they exceed a certain number, then they're, they're forced to have an additional ingress egress point.
Okay. Just for my information, so I don't ask this question every time it comes up, what is that number?
I don't know what that is. I have to defer to my engineering colleagues.
Okay. Probably twenty-seven would be my guess.
Is there someone in the house that can answer that?
Oh, thirty. Okay.
Thirty, somebody shouted out thirty, all right.
Yeah, thank you. Then my, my other comment on this, on this proposed issue tonight is essentially, thank God, that we are not going to put a commercial spot in the middle of this residential area. And, and I appreciate somebody coming forward and saying, yes, we can build houses there. So thank you very much.
Councilman Laura Tonnell?
I just have a question on the aerial, which kind of shows it better. I just want to, where it says track B on mine?
No, the other yellow one.
The other aerial with the green, yeah, that one. And because when I make it so big, it all kind of, when it says track B that goes into the green, I guess if you make it bigger, is that where the connectivity for the pedestrian area is going to be? Because when I make mine bigger, it all kind of pixelates and I can't tell. That's much better.
See track B there?
Yeah, Mayor Lord, members of the council, the proposed park is in this area. Yeah, you can see there's a track B, which is, right now, it's kind of a drainage tract. There's kind of some desert landscaping, but there is a wall up right there. So in order to, in order to maintain pedestrian connectivity, there would have to be an opening in the wall and then the applicant would be providing a sidewalk.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask, if there's going to be like a path or a sidewalk or something, so that people aren't trucking through rocks. Okay, that's all I wanted to know, I just couldn't see it very well.
My only comment is, I think it's a great plan. When you look around the area and you look at those two green areas, and then you're sharing the park with the, you know, by putting the walk, the walkway in there, I think coming into it makes a great entrance, coming off one sixty-first. I think, I think it's nice. I think it was going to sell quite quickly. Having been a sales rep, I can tell you right now, it was going to be a bad, a bad area to take on. It should, it probably will go quite rapidly. So, thank you and thank you for being so cooperative with the requests of the citizens. So, any other questions? All right, with that, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonnell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Thank you. Our next item, business item, is seven point two. It's another public hearing to consider amending the Goodyear Plan Regional Center final planned area development to allow an assisted living facility on a portion of parcel twelve for court homes. I will now open the public meeting. Steve Caraccia, your presentation.
This is a PAD amendment to the Goodyear Plan Regional Center.
Could you speak up just a little bit, please?
This is an amendment to the Goodyear Plan Regional Center PAD. The subject property is a five-acre portion of parcel twelve. And surrounding the subject property to the north and west is the Pebble Creek Community. To the east is the Rio Paseo Community. To the south is existing commercial property. And parcel twelve is located right there. In the PAD, parcel twelve is designated for court home development. That density was six point five dwelling units per acre. And this just goes to show what that parcel could develop today. Right now, it looks a minimum lot size of forty feet and width, eighty feet in depth. Maximum height is thirty feet in one or two stories. The setbacks right here with a sixty percent lot coverage. And in the PAD, this was a conceptual plan that was provided, showing a potential court Tonight's request is to place an assisted living facility on the property, shown as the proposed development plan that the applicant would like to develop. Assisted living facility would include approximately ninety-four thousand square feet in two stories. Proposal is for one hundred and eleven suites for senior and memory care. And this is the proposed architecture for the facility. Neighborhood meeting was held on June fifth. At that meeting, there were several residents from the Rio Paseo neighborhood. They voiced several concerns. One of the main concerns was the height of the structure, proposed at thirty-five feet. Residents would have liked to have seen a more compatible location for the facility. They also expressed concerns with the wall along the R E D canal, the height of landscaping, and the refuse enclosure. At the meeting, the applicant and the residents did discuss some of these items. The applicant said they would look into the issue and come back with some proposals at the P and Z meeting. P and Z was June nineteenth. At the meeting, the applicant was able to lower the height of the building from thirty-five feet to under thirty feet. So no request for any deviations for height are proposed with this PAD amendment. They also agreed to put a block, masonry block wall along the R E D canal on their east boundary for better screening. They also agreed to not place any trees in that landscape buffer so as to not block any views from the Rio Paseo neighborhood to the west. And they also agreed to relocate the refuse enclosure that was on the southern end of the site to the north, a little further away from those residences in Rio Paseo. Planning commission did vote unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council with stipulations referencing those changes requested by the neighbors. Staff is also recommending approval of this request, subject to those stipulations presented in the ordinance tonight. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. I have two speaker cards. Before they come up, is there anybody else that's in the audience that wanted to speak that didn't fill out a card? All right, so I'm going to call them up at this time. The first one would be Angela Baca? Angel, is it Angel?
It's Angel.
I'm sorry, I corrected that. I caught myself. Please state your name and address and there is a limited time, right, even on, in the public hearing?
Correct.
So you have three minutes.
Okay. How you doing? My name is Angel Baca. I live at one five three eight one West Windsor Avenue, over in the, the Rio Paseo development area. I actually live right in the corner area when he had that map up there, right with the.
Steve, would you bring the map up? Just put it on there quickly. We'll give you a few seconds that this takes, okay? Would this, is this helpful, sort of pointed out?
I guess pointed out, I live right here.
Okay.
In this general area. Can't see the homes too well, but that's where I live and so I, as you can see.
But you're sort of back on Virginia. You're back on Virginia Avenue?
Yeah, my home faces Virginia right here.
Oh, faces, okay.
So I'm the, that home right there, to be exact. So as you can see how close I am to the development in general, I'm sorry. My concerns are, is I have spoke with the, the folks that are developing and we have tried to make some headway and making a, you know, trying to come to a, I don't know what you're going to call it, like kind of like peace, you know, kind of just figure something out. In the overall aspect, I am still kind of against it. I don't know why they picked that area, you know, it's kind of, it's a facility, you're looking at it, it's going to be a building next to two neighborhoods, to be honest with you. You've got the one behind you and the other one is Pebble Creek and the retirement facility, the other is ours. I know a lot of my neighbors aren't here, you know, I know a lot of them probably just don't know too much about it. I was there at the very first point till today, you know, every meeting I've gone to. My concern is, you know, you know, they could have found a different place, yes, you know, maybe something, somewhere else, you know, could have seen some homes go back there so it stays like a neighborhood area. I understand their, you know, their aspect, it's a business, they're trying to just find the best property available and so forth. If it does come down that you, it does get built, like I said, if, if it doesn't, that's great, you know, puts home homes there. If it does get built, I've never done this before, so I don't know, how do you ask, you know, just, I, like I said, I was trying to work with them and let them know, just keep things, you know, there's going to be a lot of construction. I work nights. I'm, I know I'm going to have to deal with the noise, you know? Their environmental concerns and all that. And I've voiced my opinion to all of them, to their, their side and let them know that, you know, what about construction pollution, you know, things in that nature coming into the neighborhood, smells, you know, you know, any kind of pollutants, things in that nature. I mean, I've got two kids of my own, they play right there in that cul-de-sac and it's going to be the closest to the construction area. You know, you're talking about things in that nature. And they said they would work with me on that and go from there, but as, you know, I'm just presenting it to you folks, I've never done this before, so how does the city enforce that with them, you know, on your end? Definitely keep that on, keep them on track, is what I'm asking, you know, from the city's point. If they're going to put it there, you know, make sure that things follow through. The best way I put it to them is, look at it as if you were living there, you know, your home's there. You're not going to want to deal with all that, so, you know, definitely try to work with us and help us, you know, work with the neighborhood, be friendly to the neighborhood and, and help things out, so.
Thank you very much.
All right?
Appreciate it. We'll address those at the time that council discussion comes up here, okay? Thank you very much. And the next one is Karen Cunningham. And again, Karen, if you please state your name and your address.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Karen Cunningham. I am, my address is one five three nine six West Windsor. And you can see my house there. It's backed up, right there, about. So I have come to represent my neighbors. There were sixty-plus of us that have signed a petition that were in opposition to this amendment happening. I am, I'll give you a little background, I know I have three minutes. I am a Desert Edge teacher, about to start my ninth year there at Desert Edge. And I chose to live in Goodyear because of the signs that I saw on the streets when I was brand new here. One of them, the All-American City. The other thing that was set up there that's rather new is that it's a solar community, which is important to me, as you can imagine, being a high school teacher. Prior to buying my home, I did my research, teacher. I looked at twenty-plus homes before I invested. I found a large cul-de-sac lot that had the canal in the back and beautiful white tank mountains. But more importantly, I did my research and I saw that it was zoned for residential one and two-story homes. So I invested in the community. I added improvements to my home last year. Thirty-seven thousand dollars, I'm a hundred percent solar, so I'm one of those people on the, the sign there, I'm very proud of that. But I put thirty-seven thousand dollars into my home. When I learned about the proposed amendment coming through, I was shocked, because I did my research. A neighbor who was an original land home builder there in two thousand and five was shocked also and did some research and got some results that said, along with five other neighbors, that bought on the cul-de-sac, we've, they've all toughed it out since two thousand and five, sorry, love bracelet, since two thousand and five, paying their taxes, adding improvements on their home, and have seen sixty percent drop in their property value. You know, that's what happened with the market. But when my neighbor did the research, his shopper, and he is not here tonight, he's out of state unfortunately, he found that conservatively, we're looking to lose another ten percent of property value if the assisted living goes in there. What I wondered when I heard that was, why was the amendment going to go through? Or why was it proposed in our neighborhood? We heard from the previous presentations, is that my three minutes?
Yes.
Oh.
But I think you got the bulk of, of what you wanted to say in that three minutes.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to close the public meeting. And will the city clerk please read the ordinance thirteen twelve eighty-three by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance number thirteen dash twelve eighty-three, amending the Goodyear Plan Regional Center final planned area development to allow an assisted living facility on the southerly five point one three acres of parcel twelve designated for court homes located at the northeast corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and Virginia Avenue, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I please hear a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Pizzillo and a second by Councilman Holman. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
Steve, can you come up a second? And put that, put that map, map back up. No, I think the one that you have on there is probably...
You want the one with the houses?
Yeah, the area, yeah, with the houses, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Where's the entrance for this facility? Is it off of Pebble Creek Parkway or Virginia?
That will be, Mayor, Council, that will be the primary entrance there off Pebble Creek. There will be an emergency entrance only off of Virginia approximately here.
Okay. Second question is, on Virginia and then also on Pebble Creek Parkway, who's responsible for the, those three-foot weeds, whatever you call them, that's between the sidewalk and the road in that area? Is that us or the property owners?
The right of way, Mayor, Council?
I know it's right of way, but who's responsible for...
Property owners usually maintain those areas along arterials.
Okay. My question is, you might want to mention something to them of all the areas that one needs some work. And I assume, once that's built, that'll be there. You had mentioned in the public meeting, some of the issues they were, well, first things, get back to the code enforcement. What is our code enforcement standards as far as construction to ensure that there's not late hours working or dust pollution? How does that all tie into these type of, these type of projects as it relates to the surrounding residential?
Mayor, Council members, I know our building official has regulations on when...
Let's have someone come up and talk about that. We must have something, somebody in the room that can talk about that. I don't want hearsay, I want to know for the public exactly what we do do.
Mayor, Council members, so our building code restricts construction activity after nine o'clock and before 6:00 a.m. without permit, and it's very unusual to ask for any kind of construction permit, especially it's prohibited against single-family housing as it is in the site, so.
All right.
Also, conditions such as site dust is regulated by the county, and they're out quite frequently. In fact, our development...
Especially with PM 10.
Yes, our development community has been a little frustrated with that process. Just a single clump of dirt bigger than two inches can be sited to the site for cleanup and fine, actually. Additionally, all construction containment materials and so forth on the site will be restricted to the north end of the site, furthest away from the single-family residential, and construction access will also be restricted to that end of the site as well.
Joe, I just want to add to that. The federal government will put that on our, adding that up, that dust, and our city can lose transportation money, so we have to watch it very closely in the county, and so everybody is on top of that, so.
No, I just wanted, for the record, to make sure that gentleman's issue is addressed as far as the noise pollution and that deal with. Second question, while I have you up, as far as the height is concerned, it's, what I'm hearing, if I'm understanding correctly, the actual height of this building will be lower than potentially if there was two-stories houses in there that came in under...
Mayor, Vice Mayor, so the developer of the site was very sensitive to the concerns of the neighbors in terms of view corridors and height of the building, and therefore voluntarily reduced the entire site height below 30 feet, as well as restricting the very corner of Pebble Creek and Virginia to a one-story portion of the building.
So it's going to allow the view?
Correct. And we have some nice slides that show the view corridor as well, so we can put those up for you.
Yeah, that would be nice.
You're going to do that now, or they're going?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think he's looking. Do we have a picture also while you're putting that up? Can you put a picture of the structure itself, that, you know, the illustration? I'd appreciate it. And please announce...
Maybe I can help, absolutely.
Announce yourself, please.
Yes. My name is Greg Elmore. I live at 1915 First Street in Salem, Oregon. I'm here with Lenity Architecture and just one part of the team that's putting this together, along with Columbia Pacific Advisors and Emeritus, who will be operating the facility. We do have a quick slideshow. I'll run through it as quickly as I can. I think this is going to operate the same way we did for Planning Commission, so, again, this is the building, this is just a rendering of the building as it will currently look just from that one angle. I have some other things.
And can I interrupt here? Can you kind of, I noticed it's not just a memory, so, and that wasn't covered in the briefing, and I want that brought out.
Sure.
There are three classifications within this complex.
There are two classifications within it, yes.
If you'd enlighten us.
And I'll get to that in my second or third slide, or I can, we can, however you'd like to do it.
Well, take your time on it, that's fine.
Very good. This is just a quick, brief history of what, who Columbia Pacific is. They do assisted living, memory care, senior housing across the country and across the world. They have an excellent track record of performance, over 30 years of developing these types of facilities. And usually, we come in and we're well-received and we operate. We're not here just to build these and turn them over. We actually become a part of the community, and we hire from within the community to help us run these facilities. Why we are here is the future demand of the senior housing and the services that we're providing. We're noticing an exponential growth pattern in this, especially in this area. This need is well underserved in the area. We've done quite a bit of due diligence and recognize the need for this type of facility. Some of the community services that are offered within this building, concierge service, strong relations with all local hospitals and nearby medical, scheduled transportation, and again, these are just a list of a handful of things, a list of things that we provide as a group to the residents that move in. We have trained professional healthcare on staff and licensed nurses on staff. The nice part about this is, if there's an emergency within the facility, all emergencies ring back to our nurse call station, and then our nurse call stations, our trained staff decide whether or not we pull, we call 911. If there's a fire or anything like that, we work with the fire department. Those kind of things are answered immediately, but police and fire are not called out there unless it's a truly, truly an emergency. We do offer dining services. We have a central commercial kitchen. These assisted living and memory care, assisted living has a small kitchenette inside their unit. The memory care does not have a kitchenette. The kitchenette is a full-size refrigerator, got to get that ice cream in there, and then we also just have a microwave and a sink in that little kitchenette, but no cooking utensils. That's regulated by the state and required, we're not allowed to have that within the units. Just some amenities that happen within barber shop, salon, spa, theaters, lounges, fitness. They do a great job of not only making this inviting from the exterior of the building, but once you come in there, it's a home and a lot of services, and the residents are very well-treated. This is just a quick example of an assisted living. The assisted living comes in studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom. This, what you're seeing here is a one-bedroom unit. It's got an entryway, the kitchenette just off of it, and a living room that opens up to that kitchenette, just to kind of give it an open floor plan. Then a bedroom and a bathroom off of that. If you had a two-bedroom, most of those two bedrooms, well, all those two bedrooms are two-bedroom, two-bath, and a majority of them would just be a second bedroom on the other side of the living room. Then a studio is just a little bit bigger. You can see they range from, a little bit bigger than the one-bedroom area. It's 380 to 470 square feet, depending on where that sits in there, and that's really just kind of a living-room, bedroom combination with a small kitchenette next to it. What we do differently than a lot of the memory care that you see is, what you're looking at now is a semi-private suite, and a lot of times you see shared suites. What we do is, we go in and we actually have two entry doors. The only thing that these residents will be sharing is the bathroom. So there is that private bedroom, and there's a shared bathroom. We also offer private studios for anyone who wants to have, anyone or any family member that wants to have their loved one in that studio apartment with a private bathroom. Again, this is where we're, this is the location, we're at the northeast corner of Virginia and Pebble Creek, just above I-10. The site currently has three parcels, three tax lots. All parcels are zoned in that PAD and approved for court homes. What we're requesting is just a simple lot line adjustment. The top 12 acres we will be leaving is designated in that PAD for court homes. We're only asking for the bottom 5.13 acres to be amended to allow for this assisted living. We're also, oh, that's the same thing, sorry. We will own and control, we've, we're going to, if this goes through, we'll be purchasing all of it, so we will own and control that. And again, right now, we're planning on doing the court homes. We like the court home ideas, but the number of court homes that were being suggested simply wasn't penciling out. This is the current approved court home layout. Everything that you see shaded solid right now is allowed to be two acres. There was some conditions in the approval where everything that you see hatched right now can only be single-story. You'll notice the top corner up there still has court homes, but that's actually a power station that's been amended since this was even approved. The building setbacks along the canal are 10-foot building setback, two stories and 10-foot building setback off the canal, 30-foot setback off of Virginia, and a 40-foot setback off of Pebble Creek. So if we clear that, this is what we're proposing. You can kind of see what we're looking, didn't quite fit on there. Again, the 5.13 acres, the court homes at the top, the existing power station. So we're taking out 27 of the court homes. We will be providing 27 to 28 of the court homes, because we're looking at the shared detention area across the middle there that we might take out a couple more. It's a 79 assisted living suites, and that's the two-story portion, and then the 32 memory care suites for 55 beds. A majority of those are the shared units. So if we take, it's just kind of a blow-up of what we're providing. We are under, building coverage is under what is allowed with all the court homes. We're less than 60% of the lot coverage on this. We do have quite a bit of landscape and buffer area that we're working on.
Why, I'm going to interrupt you there.
Absolutely.
Just show us where they wanted the solid wall instead of the, right, instead of the wrought iron. And the other thing, where the neighbors didn't want trees behind the wall?
Sure.
Which I didn't understand at all, so...
Sure.
If you can just show that to me, please.
Sure. You can see, instead of a 10-foot setback, we actually have a 10-foot landscape setback along the canal.
Can you kind of push, put your finger, show anywhere?
Well, it's, it's on the...
Right around Roosevelt Irrigation. Okay, I know where you are now, okay.
Yes.
Hey, go back to the power.
I can go back to the other one.
Go back to the other one.
I think I can use the mouse.
It says it right there.
There we go.
Yeah.
Right along this landscape buffer right here is where they asked us to remove some trees. They didn't want the trees to grow up above the eight-foot wall, that they requested an eight-foot wall along the canal.
Is there a reason for that?
I believe it was for view, to protect some of the views, because if the trees were, if the trees grew up above that eight-foot wall, that was going to be closer to the residents across the canal. And again, that canal distance from our property line, the property that the canal owns and then their property line is about 110 feet.
Is there a mountain view from that side?
There is a mountain view off to the west, that is correct. And I can, and I'll show you that as well. We're just handling landscape buffers. The other one is, if you remember back, there was a 10-foot setback off of the canal. Along the canal side, we've pushed our building 52 feet off of that, off of that setback. 80 feet off of Virginia, I believe it's 87 feet, can't read it on here, 87 feet off of Pebble Creek, and then 35 feet along the north that we're going to be sharing.
Okay, Steve, so, from the people that came up to speak to us in the evening, what is the footage between their wall and where all this takes place? So I mean, how much space are we looking at?
Sure.
To include the canal, if the canal is part of that? So just kind of give me a...
Mayor, Council members, the RID canal itself, the property, is at least 100 feet wide?
That's 100 feet, just for the canal itself.
That itself, yes.
Now, on the side part of it, the land part, that's, how much is that, just?
The land, again, the land, the canal and the land, there's land on either side of the canal, that's 110 feet wide.
That's what I was looking for.
There you go.
Okay, so it's 110 feet wide?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Go back to the presentation. There we go. So these are just some additional site requests that were made by the residents. We had, we had three neighborhood meetings. We had one with Pebble Creek. We had one where 115 people showed up, 110 to 115 people showed up. We had one with Rio Paseo. The original one, when we, when we got it to the HOA president, about two people showed up the first meeting. And then we had one that was set up by Steve and his group and the Planning Department, and we had about, we had nine others show up, and we got them all to sign in. We, I haven't talked to any of the 60 that signed the petition, and no one has, no one came to the Planning Commission either, and I don't know if there's anything else additional that we can, we can address, but what came up in the, when the nine that showed up, these are the things that came up and that we addressed. Reducing the landscape along the canal, that's where, that's the section right there that they asked us to do, and that was just to pull the trees down. They were fine with us putting shrubs up on our side of the wall, so we're not just looking at a blank wall, but across the canal, they have a blank wall, and I'm guessing that's, that was the direction that was to go.
I just, I'm just curious, so if you put a tree there, how far up to the roof line does that tree go?
I guess the trees could grow as, you know, the 20 to 30 feet, we're more, we would, we had shown trees.
I'm just curious, I want these questions answered, though.
Absolutely.
Because I have to tell you, when I was looking at it, I questioned that. I thought, well, I mean, I know they wanted it, don't get me wrong, I just want to know the reasoning behind it, and so I'm asking you if, you know, the type of trees we plant, a palm tree maybe, that high, I don't know if the other ones get that big.
Right. And we're, we were open.
I know you're not, I'm not, I'm not doing, we're just...
We were open to whatever, sure.
This is just to answer questions, for us to help make a decision.
Absolutely.
I'm not going either side, I just want to know...
Absolutely.
The information, okay.
The other one is, on this, it's a little bit hard to see, but we had the trash enclosure originally located on the south end. We elected to move it after comment, move it up to the north end to put it between the two.
And that makes great deal of sense.
They asked us to put this wall here. Originally, we had an open railing wall, wrought iron, open railing in case there was...
And I think they have that on their side, or do they have...
There's, there's a couple of sections of that open railing, but the majority of that wall is an eight-foot CMU.
Sorry, guys, I'm taking this all around.
And then the other one was, we were going in, in our original design, we were about 34 foot eight inches tall. We went back, we redesigned, restructured the roof, and now our highest point is at 29 foot two, which is under the allowed 30-foot, but the majority of our roof is going to be at 27 foot seven inches, so that was just to bring it back so we weren't having to ask for that variance.
I'm going to stop you here, because I was so rude not to have Council go first. That's usually the procedure, and I got carried away with this. So I want to go back to Council to make sure we get everything there, so.
If you have...
Let's start off here on the right. Comments? And I apologize ahead of time, Council.
Don't worry.
Every now and then, the mayor likes to say something, and I get to kind of jump...
I think every once in a while, you should be able to, so there you go.
Yeah, but procedure-wise, I was out of line, so please go ahead.
All right, well, I actually, I'm going to call Sarah out by name to the city attorney. I actually have kind of a procedural question first, is, we've heard from the applicant now for the last 15 minutes or so, and don't take that as an offense, because it's been a great presentation. But we tell our resident, you only have three minutes. So we don't get to hear, she's got 60 signatures on a petition and concerns, and I understand the public comment period is only three minutes, but there seems to be an imbalance in the amount of information that we receive as a council. We have a 15-minute presentation from the applicant, and we have residents who have a concern, and there's 60 of them that sign a petition, and we don't get to hear the whole story. Is there any way we can remedy that and let Ms. Cunningham finish?
Probably would have worked if they would have had the comments, the general comments from the 60, if she said the 60, but I just want to interject something in here, Bill. Councilman Stip, we're not doing this because we think that's the way to go, we're doing this for state law.
No, no, I understand.
Our procedure is, we're, our hands are tied in many ways, but I understand what you're saying. you're saying.
Right, so I'm, I'm asking the question, is there, is there a workaround to this three-minute issue?
And did we get those sixty signatures turned into the city at any time?
Because I, I saw that a number of times in the, in the, the staff report, the number of signatures, et cetera, but I'm kind of curious.
Well, I mean, the reason the applicant is, the reason the applicant is, is speaking is you have questions, and I, I would, you know, the public comment period, I think you have the same right to ask the citizen questions if you have additional questions for her. The three-minute public comment period really is for the, for that person to come forward with.
And I really didn't.
With their presentation.
Actually, I didn't direct him to, to, to talk to her at that time, so I have to say I did not do that.
So I could ask.
So we did not.
Ms. Cunningham, some questions?
I believe you could, consistent with, with the, with the spirit of the public comment period, which is limit for citizens to come forward with their position for three minutes, but if council has additional questions that run over.
So as a mayor, I can, I can grant that?
Yes.
Okay, so can I ask those questions?
I'm going to say, as a mayor, I'm going to grant that, and if you'll just step aside, and we'll have the citizens to come, you want to talk to the citizen.
Specifically, Mrs. Cunningham, if that's.
To Karen Cunningham.
I don't know.
Ms. Cunningham, do you mind coming up?
I don't want to say ma'am, because I'd probably get, you know, hit with that, so.
You can say Ms.
Ms.
Yes. And Ms. Cunningham, I apologize for not.
I didn't understand the procedure.
Yeah, yeah, your mayor didn't exactly either, so.
And the three minutes are, you know, we're, we're bound by that, so I'm going to have to ask you questions.
Okay.
So, to kind of go through that. So you've got sixty, sixty signatures on petitions, and from what I've gathered from reading the information of what was presented during the Planning and Zoning Commission, et cetera, is the residents' biggest concern is property devaluation, is that?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And when you did your research in looking at this neighborhood, so to speak, on the other side of the canal.
Yes.
It was, it was all court homes. And that didn't give you any concern at all about what might be in there?
No, because it was still residential.
Okay.
That's the concern, and then, and like I said, Mr. Schopper isn't here tonight. I did turn in the sixty signatures to the zoning commission on the fifth of June, so they did have, I provided copies for everyone, so that.
We got copies of those.
Okay.
Without addresses, which was, which was great, because I appreciated the privacy, but it was very difficult, because I had no idea where these people were from. So I didn't know whether they were from Windsor, or whether they were from my street, for crying out loud, so, but.
I have a copy here, I got quite a few addresses.
It's fine, I think, I think the fact we've got sixty, if this was a, if we were talking about putting in a speed cushion in this neighborhood, sixty signatures would be more than enough to get a speed cushion put in.
Okay.
So I think if we've got sixty residents who are concerned, we should probably at least hear some of, some of that, some of, of that concern.
Thank you.
So if, this is theoretically, this is still a residential structure. It, I don't know where it fits in the zoning, if it's a, what its R factor is for, for zoning, or if it stays an I or a C. Can I look to somebody who might know the answer to that?
Do we have a classification, a described?
Does it stay as a, like an R three, or? It is a commercial, okay. But it will, it will house some folks there. And I am a little bit more confident, because it's not an apartment building, that they're going to be relatively quiet, given the nature of what we're putting there. So is there, is there really any, and I don't want to say your other concerns aren't important, but is there, is there anything about this particular type of facility that concerns you as a resident?
I think the most concern when I'm speaking on behalf of the other people that signed the petition for me, and we only asked people to sign that were adjacent to the area, we didn't go back into the neighborhood at all, so that's why we were limited to the sixty.
Sure.
The biggest concern was, it's not consistent with the neighborhood. I believe, you know, we all understand, God willing, we're all going to get old, and we need to have places like this, this makes sense to us. But it didn't seem consistent with the land use, and also when we bought our property, it wasn't consistent with it, and it is an amendment process. So we understand that the city realizes, and the clients, they realize that we're asking permission and we're going through that process, but it doesn't make it consistent with our neighborhood.
Sure. The only other question that I have is, right across the street on Virginia is another vacant lot that is zoned for commercial as well.
Correct.
And that can be pretty much, I don't want to say anything, yeah. That is going to change your neighborhood feel, and that the RID canal really provides a good geographical buffer, and so I'm, as well as Virginia Avenue would for you as, as well. So I'm, I guess I'm, I'm trying to find that, that sweet spot in this whole thing, that we've got a, we've got a need to be filled, we've got a responsible, or responsive applicant who's been willing to make some changes from a city council member's perspective. It's very hard to say no to an event like that, because it really kind of meant everything. However, there are sixty of you, so that's the other, that's the other guy sitting on my shoulder that worries about that, so it is my hope that if this is approved, that there'll be some understanding by the residents in, in that area.
And we have had meetings with the clients that are proposing the site, and we understand, you know, they have been very good that way, and, but so have my neighbors' concerns.
Sure.
We're trying to protect our property value. And when I looked on the website, I mean, I do most of my research online, because I'm not privy to everything that's done behind, you know, on the council and everything, but what I found, I thought, well, maybe it's tax dollars, you know, it's looking for vision for the city, what are the, the needs for a growing city? And I thought, no, it didn't balance in tax dollars, because unless I'm incorrect, it looked like it was two-point-five percent regard, if the residential was there, the commercial site was there, or patio homes. So that, I thought, okay, but I don't know what the numbers are as far as that goes. So I thought, okay, that's not the vision of the city they're looking for. The residents, and I feel funny speaking for everyone, but.
Let her up, there's only Angel back there.
Yeah, there's only Angel back there.
Smiling.
I know. The thing that we're concerned about is loss of property value, and to, yeah, that's, that's the biggest thing. I mean, I actually have faith in our system, and that you're going to make equitable judgments for us as our representatives, but I, and I thank you for giving me more than three minutes, because I just, I thought, oh, they get, you know, they're up there, and so thank you very much for the exception on that. But we're worried about our property values. Yes, we are going to lose a beautiful view, we are. I brought, this is my view, the way it stands right now, and it's one of the reasons that I bought that, even though I knew there were going to be possibly two-story and one-story patio homes in there. But with spaces, it wasn't going to be a big block there. That is why, one of my reasons why I invested in that spot, as did Todd next to me and the next six or seven people down the line. Of course, it's really only going to affect about four of us, or five of us, at the end nearest where they're doing the amendment.
Well, I appreciate hearing the rest of the story from you, so thank you very much for coming up and speaking.
Thank you very much. Can I interject while she's there?
Sure.
If there's any other councilperson that has a question for her, do you, anybody have a question directly?
Not for her, no, not yet.
No. Anybody here? Okay.
Okay, can I finish then?
Oh, I thought you were finished, I'm sorry, okay.
So, so I do appreciate hearing, hearing the rest of that story, and, and I think, speaking obviously for myself, that in looking at the bigger picture for the city, what amenities we have available right here is critically important to all of our property values. And having a facility such as this, having a hospital, having warehouses, and having office buildings, those are, they all populate the landscape for us. And so when we look at, what are we going to do, and what actions are we going to take, they are, they are for the, for the betterment of the community. I agree with you that my hope is in the system that as the economy turns around, and those deep losses that we all suffered are all going to come back, you have the added benefit of right across the street from you is going to be a beautiful mall, and that is going to, we know is going to positively impact your, your property values. So there, there is a great trade-off, and I know, speaking for myself, it, it's never easy. So again, thank you for, for coming up. The, I don't have any concerns specifically about the, about the site plan itself. Did I hear the applicant say that you guys are purchasing or have purchased the rest of that property? I'm seeing, will purchase? That is not a stipulation, I'm assuming, to this deal. All right, thanks, that's all I had, thank you.
Councilor Laura Tannen.
I don't have any questions for her, I hate to make her, her stand here.
Okay, so no other questions? Thank you very much. First of all, I want to know, it's always so nerve-wracking, I've been on the other side like that, and when you come up.
I do kind of feel like Davian Goliath here.
It is.
I want you to stand there.
And you know, I.
I do.
If I hadn't done that several times before, I absolutely understand that, and I want you to know that this is your right as a citizen, and we appreciate it. And I apologize once more for any bumbling, how I presented you tonight and the after, because we do want to, to hear from you. We, we may end up agreeing to disagree, but this is your time, and you're right, and we need to be telling you exactly how we feel, and every, the trans, so we all have had our moments. So again, thank you very much, for both of you for coming up tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
I, I didn't want to leave her standing there.
No, I don't think so, thank you.
I guess I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments as well.
All right.
I was on planning and zoning before I came here, so I kind of understand where our city, you know, what we need, and, and I think they tried to balance the two neighborhoods. There's another neighborhood on the other side of y'all, that's Pebble Creek, and, and that is a retirement area, and I think this is kind of why they probably placed it there, because it's transitional. Someone said to me just the other day, even before I knew this was on, that if something happened to their husband, they would not be able to stay in Goodyear, because they couldn't take care of their property here, because we are severely lacking in this type of housing, unfortunately. I, I think we want, because we're all going to age, I think we want housing that people can stay with their friends, their children, their family, their neighbors, if they can't take care of themselves at home. And I, I do think there's a lot of positives here, and I do hear the neighbors' concerns. I think a lot of people may be fearful that this is going to be a quote-unquote nursing home, and from my understanding, it is not a nursing home. Is that correct? That's, because I think when you look at a nursing home, property values, as opposed to this type of complex, I think we're probably looking a little different.
This has a nurse's wing, so just be sure.
A nurse's wing, but not a nursing home, as you think.
And it's not even a nurse's wing, this is an, this is an assisted living and memory care, two, two very different.
What is memory care?
Memory care is Alzheimer's or, or any type of dementia, and it's not a lockdown-type facility, but it's, it's got a little bit more control for the resident, anybody that might be, might be suffering from those types of diseases. It is two very different licenses from a skilled nursing. If we have somebody who's bedridden or, or in a skilled nursing, they cannot stay in this facility. State licensing, we have to go through an entire licensing process with this facility after we get our building permits, that, and operate under that license to the state of Arizona.
But you did state in the book, you have RNs that are in there.
We have, we have.
Registered nurse, okay.
We have a full-time nurse, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I, maybe my wing was wrong terminology, but you have an area for them to visit that has a registered nurse.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I just wanted to be kind of clear about that, because I think that's a difference than what people might have, think might be going in there, that this is going to be, people are going to be able to come and go on their own, those that are able.
Yes.
You have activities.
Yes.
I don't want to call it an apartment complex, because it looks more like a hotel-type of environment, or. My other question is with regard to, and the mayor really set forth a lot of the dimensions on the canal, if we get in there and the residents want to add trees, is that something you would consider once they're there, if they say, you know what, once it's up, is that something that can be changed?
Absolutely. In fact, the, the initial landscape plan that we submitted to, to the planning department, just to kind of get this ball rolling, it had trees. And, and it was, it was a little bit odd for us, but, but, but I have a couple of slides that, that it might show kind of what they were looking at, and, and the reason why they might have been asking us not to put those trees in.
And for the construction, because we heard some very concerns about the construction.
Absolutely.
Unopposed to like a family home development that might be under construction for months at a time.
Yes.
You know, or years, to get it all done.
Yes.
How long will this be under construction, breaking ground to being done approximately?
These are about eleven-to-thirteen month process. If the weather's good, and, and this is, this is going to be the fifth, this is a new prototype that we're rolling out, and this is the fifth building that we'll be doing. So we're, we're getting pretty good at it, and, and our, and our contractor's actually local to the area, so.
And you've had the chance to talk to the residents that have come before us today?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, and it's been very good conversations back and forth, we've, we appreciate the process just as much as, as, as you do, we, we understand the process, and that's why, and that, that's another reason we kind of selected this site, because when we come out and, and we look for this type of facility, we do extensive demographics and, and find out where the need and the population need for this type of facility is, and we like to be that buffer between commercial and residential. We, we, since we are a little of a mixture of a both, of both, this is a piece of land that was available, everything opposite us to the south is simply not available, it's tied up with other people right now, and, and we, we couldn't get our hands on it. This is a good piece of property. We actually like the idea of the, of the pad homes, excuse me, the court homes to the north of us, as a, as a potential senior-type feeder for this as well, because the court home is either a, a starter-type home, or a, or a retirement home that would, that would feed into this, this use as well. So we like the idea, but, but this is really, this is what, this is what needed to be on that corner to make this, the, the entire property work. It's been vacant for a while, and, and that's why we're looking at it.
And there's not going to be any truck traffic or anything going along that back end where the homes are or anything?
The truck traffic, we have deliveries that, that take place, but it's, but they're during regular business hours, and, and we have a strict seven-to-seven policy, once the, the building is up, when the, the visitors come in between seven and seven, the building kind of goes on to a, not lockdown, but a, you know, a general secure, a much more secure type of a setting, just because we're, we're responsible for the seniors as well, and their well-being.
Okay, thank you.
Can I go, do you keep going through, or?
No, you just stay right there, we're going to continue going here.
We're going to keep going, all right, let's go.
Yeah, Vice Mayor?
No, I just, I wanted Steve to put the map back up again, so I could, I could see what's below, okay.
Can I do that?
Yes.
All right, ready.
Is that, what's, what's south, what's, what's south of Virginia right there?
This is zoned commercial, and then you have a, there's a strip, a strip commercial that runs all up and down Pebble Creek.
Okay, so that's Papa John's is in that south, okay. And is that corner, is that vacant right now? I'm trying to remember.
This corner?
Yes.
Is vacant, yes.
Okay, but below that is where all the commercial buildings are, there's commercial, okay.
That's correct.
All right. That's all it.
Okay, Sherilyn, do you have it?
I do not.
Well, I, I have a number of things that I want to talk about. A couple of things, just tell me the height of a, a two-story home.
Thirty.
Compared to, compared, I don't know.
Yeah, twenty.
I live in a two-story, but I don't know at all.
Sure. Twenty-four to thirty feet.
Twenty-four or thirty feet.
Twenty-four to thirty feet and, and these were approved at thirty feet, the, the court homes.
So we could have gotten double-story in there.
Yes, the math that I showed earlier, there's a lot of-
We could have done homes and double-story.
Yes.
Okay. And this is going to really sound really cruel, but I sold homes, I was in the business for a long time, new homes, and I always told people that wrote a contract with me, you're not getting a view with this contract. You may have a view today, but this is not buying a view. And this is the hardest thing to try to explain to people that are coming into a new area where it's undeveloped. The other thing I would always tell my customer, you see that C, it says "commercial"? Don't kid yourself. The only guarantee you have is the patch you're buying. That plat that you're buying is the only guarantee, because as cities progress and what's happened to our city, who would have thought back then that our economic development and all these things would happen? And plans are continually changing as the increase in population and as the demand comes in. So there's some cruelty to the side of buying your, your, your home too, because you really are, what you bought is that community that you're in and, and that's it. And it sounds so cruel and I, and I always, I almost hate saying it, but it is what it is and so that's, that's always very difficult. I do believe that we'll take care of that noise and dust that happens in one phone call. We shouldn't even take one phone call. We, we should be monitoring that, so I, I just, we're just really getting strict on that. The other thing is you're located across one of the biggest commercial areas that we're going to have a regional shopping center. This area in here, all that area is, it, it's going to have buses, transportation, because we're working on that. It's, you know, our, a little plug for our commuter, okay, for the council and open to the public, so just, so we have that going and we have lots of, we've got a movie theater, two, two department stores coming, means trucks, means, so it is an area already that there is going to be noise from the area, unfortunately. So it's something you're going to have to learn to contend with. It's something that we need to help monitor it, so that we're, we're, you know, sympathetic to, okay, how are we going to get the trucks in and out of there and how are we going to do this to best help our neighborhood? So I feel that, a strong responsibility for that. How lucky you are that you're living on that canal. What an asset. Truly an asset. So when you say property values, that, that's, that's an asset. My question to staff is, where did this man come up with definitely a 10% lowering of property values? I have never heard that before and, and I always kept closely, I've visited a lot of my customers, because we had buybacks, so I went to their homes to see what they were going to get for their homes. I was in all of those assessments. I missed that somewhere, because in my view, it's not. Some people will think it's an attribute and an asset rather than-
Mayor, council members, so property valuation is a science, right? It's, it's done as a professional certification and so staff can only speak to experience on projects over, you know, a 25-year career. And typically, transportation factors can influence property valuations the most, some positively, some negatively. So for example, if we were discussing an arterial street here, that would be considered an asset to a residential community. If we were discussing an immediate freeway or major transportation quarter, that would be a diminution of the value of the home. So it really is dependent upon what the use is. Typically, commercial is a net even, so adjacent commercial is considered a net even valuation factor. And so this case, where we're taking a project from residential to commercial, we would have to, in our judgment, consider it a net even impact on the community.
Okay, all right. Does that help anybody? Let me see if I've gotten all my, in the other word, lifetime, how high is lifetime? Lifetime exercise, the, the peak, how, 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 how tall is that? I mean what?
It's 54 in that district along, yes, McDowell.
Fifty-four and that's visible from all, all those neighborhoods in there. And I remember we did a special permit on that one to get their little dome put up there with the light.
Mm-hmm.
And that, there were homes right behind that, if everybody remembers the development we sold. And so that, that's been there for quite some time and quite visible. Let me see, make sure I've done everything. The other thing is I want staff to remind me, what, did we not have a Wells Fargo Bank looking at that property? Yes, we did. And they came up several times and, and we thought they were, they were going to apply. I don't know what happened. They went to maybe a different location, but, so it's not the only thing that could have been there. You could have been before us tonight and we're going to put a bank in there.
Mayor, that's correct. In fact, it's, it's fairly common to see an arterial corner like that to have a commercial use.
That's right. And when you look at Pebble Creek Parkway and you look where all of a sudden Virginia in that area, you're looking commercial all the way up to I-10 and south beyond that. So when, when they do their planning, planning changes again as, as the city develops in every, every which way it's going to, and every city's different. So this is just kind of generated to this point. So again, for the neighborhood, you know, I'm, I think this is, is good. I live in Pebble Creek, so I see it almost weekly of the number of people who are into dementia or Alzheimer's and I, the mates don't want to move in with their kids, they don't want to put their mate in one installation and they go off to another. So I actually see that and it's not a, a small population, it's a growing population. And so when they came to talk to us about this, I, I got very emotionally involved in this, thinking this was a need for our city. And I, I've seen the other end of it, of the tears and the regrets and the people having to move out of our city and leaving all their friends and a community that they're, they're familiar with. So I'm, I was from the very beginning, very pro to this, but I wanted it to look nice and we talked about that at the first meeting, that I knew this council would be strict on how that building would look and the amenities it would have. So that's sort of where I'm coming from. Any other questions before we go to a vote on this? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes five-zero.
Thank you and we'll go to the next one, 7.3. We will now consider setting the property tax levies for FY14. Terry Canada, the Budget and Research Manager, will present.
I am here tonight with the final step, the final legal step of the fiscal year 14 budget process. We will be requesting you to approve the ordinance for the property tax levy tonight. A brief presentation, just kind of recapping some of the events that have taken place during the budget process this year. You can see we started with the retreat. We've seen this calendar a number of times. Again, this is the final step in the process, adoption of the property tax levy. Here's a four-year comparison of the tax levy, broken down by primary and secondary. The property tax rate for this year is going to be 1.9. Just wanted to remind you that the two components of the property tax are the primary tax and that goes into the general fund. It supports day-to-day operations such as fire, police, city attorney, finance office, all your basic governmental services that are not rate-funded. And then we have the secondary property tax, roughly right around $4 million. That supports your general obligation bond debt payments for the year. This is comparative 13 to 14. It went up slightly, about $400,000. So again, what does this mean to your average taxpayer here? Comparative chart here for home value, fiscal year 13 over 14, the difference was a slight decrease of about $4,000. Taxes paid to the average homeowner would be an increase of about $7. This chart is again, some history on what we've seen, the fluctuation we've seen since fiscal year nine. Total tax levy was about $14 million. We've seen the ups and downs of that to proposed fiscal year 14 and right around $11 million. You can see this is the first time in three years we've had a positive increase in the levy. We also note on here the rates for the six-year period, median home values and the residential tax that will be paid associated with that medium home value. And if there are no questions on the presentation tonight or the rate or the levy-
Questions, Council?
Just a-
Oh, let's, can we wait and go ahead and just get a motion first? I'm sorry. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Will the city clerk please read the ordinance by title only, 13-1282?
Adopt Ordinance 13-1282, a leveling upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Goodyear, subject to primary and secondary taxation, a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amounts estimated to be required in the annual budget for the purpose of paying for various expenses to raise the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenues, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying principal and interest upon bonded indebtedness, all for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2014.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo, open for council discussion, discussion. Councilman, Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Just an observation, can you go back to that second to last slide?
Oops, this is going to get me where I need to be. This one?
That's the one. Yes. Just an observation, I know there's been articles in the newspaper varying about tax increases or decreases over, during the recession, but as you notice here, our total tax levy since 2009 has actually dropped several millions of dollars. So, and not only that, the median tax, you know, has actually dropped. I don't know if that's 40% or whatever, I, I don't know what the 200, I'm just trying to do the math in my head, but just, just want to note that, you know, as we kind of go forward. And again, in my view, the biggest reason for that drop is now our utility company is finally paying its true cost of all the debt service, which was primary in the past, being paid by property taxes, which is now being paid by user fees. And it's my understanding, that's the main reason why we see such a, a significant drop in that. So I think this is noticeable, because it kind of bucks the trend of what some of the others have been going on, as far as property tax levies or totals, even during the recession. So that's the only reason, comment on this particular slide.
Joe, can you just comment on the, the $1.42 on 2011? Why that, why that in 2011 was? Isn't that the year we paid?
Well, that's when we started, that's when we started moving the money, you know, from the property taxes being paid by water and, and water and wastewater bonds to now being paid for, which in my view should have been all the time, is for the, those that are actually using the service, which is the enter, the people out of the enterprise fund. So that's when that started then.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Stip?
Terry, if I remember this correctly, and maybe this is going to be going to Larry or the city manager, but we've, we've kind of adopted the quote-unquote floating rate principle. So this rate that's at 190 is going to, the rate is going to go up, I think, next year. Yeah, Larry's shaking his head, so why don't you just, can you explain what we're going to see in the future with the rate? As the levy itself remains somewhat flat?
Yes, Mayor Lord. Councilman Stip, we're expecting next year for the first time since about 2009, I believe, for our total assessed valuation to actually increase. And, but with that, the debt service levy that Vice Mayor Pizzillo referred to will be going up about $600,000. And so we're anticipating next year, the rate will continue at $1.90 for one more year and then we'll start down and I believe that it's about 2017 that we expect it to get back down to the $1.60 level, 16 or 17.
Okay. So I just want to, you know, kind of point that out as we continue with the ongoing confusion about rate versus levy, et cetera, and to kind of paint the picture of where that rate's going to go. So thanks.
Councilman Loretano?
And I think when we were talking about the 1.43, we took money from another fund.
I was hoping you said that, but I didn't want it, we actually paid it down by the additional money we had-
We basically paid for everybody.
From, from the enterprise fund.
What was happening is you had debt service from Water and Sewer, which is part of the enterprise fund, being paid by property taxes. And in my view, and probably a lot of the others, should have been paid by the user fees. And part of that drop was $1.5 million of that debt service that was property tax, actually was moved over to, to the user fees where it should have been to begin with. So that's how that moved. In fact, it really didn't impact, because they had reserves, if I recall correctly, enough in there to cover it, so really didn't impact rates either. So they're starting to pay and it's my understanding now, and correct me if I'm wrong, Larry, the enterprise fund is covering all its costs now. So, I mean, it's not, you know, the, the current city utility fund is not subsidizing those, people from the north are not subsidizing those from the south, so. That has slowly been moved down and that's, in my view, that's where the biggest impact has been, which is a good thing, because what it's doing now is those people who are driving those costs are paying those costs.
So when we look at the percentages, I guess it's really kind of, there should be a little asterisk between that minus 21.89, that it was, the rate was kind of bought down, I guess.
Well, I wouldn't say it's bought down. People who should be paying it to begin with are now paying it. We started moving it over where it should be, but I wouldn't call it bought down. That's kind of misleading.
I mean, it's similar when we, when I first got on the council and we found out that the north was subsidizing the south for the utility bills and we were taking it out of the general fund and it was like, oh, wait a minute, people need to pay for what they're using and so we made those changes and that's why the increases and so forth and again, it fixed all this, so.
And can we put some sort of asterisk in the records with that? Because I think that's really a little misleading, negative 21%, unless you have Joe to explain-
You know, I really think that, because that's why I brought it up for Joe to talk about, because when you look at that, it looks like a, you know, why? So if we could, each time, I know, you know, it takes all, so many times repeating this over and over to people to understand, but I'd like to be sure that's part of the presentation. Okay? Agreed? All right? Are you ready? Okay, let's roll call vote on this, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes five-zero.
All right, the last item is that 7.4, we will now consider adopting an amended and restated development agreement for Perderra. Bob Beckley, Deputy City Manager, will present. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I have just a very short presentation. We, this is the West Goodyear Planning Area and two weeks ago, we, we talked about Annenberg Meadows and also La Jolla Vista. This is a, really a replica of the other developments. The terms are identical. First, the, just the planning area, the central planning area is what you've seen before. Perderra is located at the northwest corner of Lower Buckeye and Citrus, right across from the proposed La Jolla Vista development. This Perderra is the third development that will be brought before you. Two weeks ago, we covered the previous two developments. The master plan, development plan is shown here. The plat was, this plat was approved, but final plat was approved by council and is not, has not been recorded. All terms, as I mentioned before, the amended development agreement are the same as the previous terms of the agreements that you approved on the 24th of June. And the plat, according to the terms, must be recorded by May 31st, 2014. And there will be coming before you a cost of, a cost recovery resolution of intention for the cost sharing of all the regional infrastructure that's required of the developers and reimbursed to the other developers for those costs. So I'll answer any questions and if, if there's any legal questions, the Assistant City Attorney, Sarah, has authored this agreement, as well as participation from Development Services and other departments.
Good, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Would anybody from the audience like to speak that didn't fill out a card? All right, will the city clerk please read Resolution 13-1563 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution 13-1563, approving and authorizing and directing execution of an amended and restated development agreement regarding development of 100- an amended and restated development agreement regarding development of 160-acre parcel generally located at the northwest corner of Lower Buckeye Road and Citrus Road within the city of Goodyear, Poderah, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out intent of resolution and agreement and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Questions? Can I have a, sorry, can I have a motion in a second, please?
Still moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilwoman Stip and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo, open for council discussion. Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Just to make sure it's my understanding, the developer puts in all the infrastructure at their cost, and then the reimbursement agreement is for those who tag into that, but it's not at the city's dime? Is that my understanding?
That's correct, with the regional improvements, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Alright, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Great, I guess that finishes it, so let's go to information items. Do council have anything they'd like to add tonight? I guess you're all talked out, I guess we are, huh?
Have a safe summer. Have a safe summer.
Watch your children around water.
That's true, we're about ready to take a little time off, and if you see staff walking around smiling, it's because they're going to get a break from the council, especially the city manager, although we may be sneaking in off and on to attend some things, so keep safe this break, okay? Have fun, rest up. I think it's going to be a busy year next year. You see that 8 o'clock? I think next year with the pulling of permits, you're going to be in here till 9 o'clock. I can't wait to see Councilwoman Stip's face when that happens. Any other comments? I'm going to go to the city manager. City manager, follow-up or comments?
Mayor, members of the council, I just have one follow-up item that I captured, and that is, is when we show the one property tax comparison table, to have some kind of footnote in there as far as a reason for the drop.
That would be great, that would be great.
That just helps clarify that. The other is, is, yes, I couldn't agree more, it's a time to just get away from the Monday night meetings, there will still be obviously the activities of the city going on full bore throughout this time, but look forward to getting back with council on August the 19th. Thank you.
I think Vice Mayor has an inquiry.
One more direction of staff, that property kind of brought it up to me tonight. If you take a look at that Virginia and Pebble Creek, most of the property owners around there keep it pretty clean, but right there you have some sizable weeds there between the walkways and the street. Could you get them to kind of clean that up for us? Appreciate it.
Just for clarification, that's on Pebble Creek or on Virginia, or both?
Pebble Creek, and I think it's that whole corner there, if I recall right. You've got Virginia, and as you head north on Pebble Creek, you'll see it between the walkways and the street. Kind of go over...
They seem to miss the walkways right really close on, and that almost looks like a small bush growing, but, so maybe they think that's something that should be left there, I don't know, but I see it off and on, too.
Okay, certainly, we'll follow up.
Clean that corner up and whatever.
You know, you're taking getting into the weeds to a whole new level. And on that, on that note...
Okay, well, the next meeting will be August 19th, 2013, and council will be on vacation from July 9th to August 18th. So with that, have a great time, staff, meeting adjourned.